Right of faith, yeah.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started ladies and gentlemen, and we'll have a call to order. If with that, if you don't mind, we've not had this problem, but I just heard it go off. If you don't mind, please silence your opponents. So with that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation in Bedford. If you don't mind what you did, the pledge, if I could just kind of make sure it's all placed.
My pledge of allegiance is to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, which art in heaven, have you come to thee at this time, and pray that you will bless our city and bless each commissioner of heaven, Father, as we make decisions for the better of our city. Heavenly Father, just pray that you will bless our world as it holds in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Grand Mary here.
Mr. Davis here.
Mr. Bryan here.
Ms. Michael Schip here.
Mr. Smith here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, approval or correction of minutes from prior meetings? And Cory has instructed me that M-PAS has now asked that we approve the minutes from the work sessions as well, so you're going to see, uh...
July and August of work sessions.
July and August of the study session and August of the regular commissioners' meetings.
So going forward, it should always be one work session, one regular session?
Correct.
That we're catching up from July?
In order to get it correct, we're going to get those two done. So after everybody's had an opportunity to review, I'll let me take a motion.
Ma'am, I'd like a motion to approve July and August. Do I need to say the study session and the...
I would.
Okay.
Clarify for a minute.
Study session and the regular meeting.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll take the second.
We have a motion in a second, I'll approve. I have a motion, opposed, motion carries. Number five, awards, presentations, and appointments. Everybody was wondering why you have a pen and a pad. This is related to the communications committee appointments. And Kate and I have discussed this, and if you would, please, please write down the two people that you had requested to be on here, and get those two Kate. And then we will have the official appointments at the next meeting. Just doing some cleanup, catch up a bit from where we're going to start that.
The people that we...
The ones that you originally asked.
Had extras, and we haven't had all of them.
We just want to get it squared up, cleaned up, make sure it's all right. That's all right, it doesn't have to happen right now, but that's what that is for. Everybody was questioning me, why do I have a pen and a pad in front of me? All right, no motion or anything needs to be made on that.
Yes, sir.
All right, number six. Completion and review of unfinished business from prior meetings, eight ordinance, 2019-1041. This is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance amending Title 14 zoning and land use control, Chapter Two, zoning ordinance of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same thing as zoning ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including Municipal Zoning Map Incorporated, therein by rezoning a property from residential low density R1 to neighborhood commercial. And with that, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing first before we entertain any motions on this. So anyone in the audience that wishes to speak concerning this, and this is to rezone a piece of property on North Main Street here...
Right at First Avenue.
Right at First Avenue, where it dead ends into North Main, right there, from rezoning it again, from R1 residential to neighborhood commercial. So again, anyone wishing to speak on this, please now. And when you come forward, please state your name and your address.
My name is Joseph Brown. Address is 1404 from Stone Drive, Columbia.
And... If you don't mind, sir, please state that you're the pastor of that church.
Well, yeah. I am the pastor of West Point Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you.
And that's the land that's in question, I believe. I believe that stolen spot that's in question, I'm not sure. But, um, I'm just here on behalf of our church body, just to appeal to you not to allow that to happen, especially in our backyard. You know, that, uh, that rezoning, I'm not sure, but I believe that, uh, this effort was tried once before, like one block over at some apartment buildings, to bring Orizon's down here, and that didn't happen. So I just ask that you be fair with us also, that you not allow whatever might come in. I don't, I talked to Mr. Kitchell, I believe, Mr. Kitchell, and he kind of gave me some of his visions of what he wanted to do with that land. But, uh, I think it will affect, you know, our place of worship. So I'm just appealing to you all to consider that this is a church, and it's just a small church. We don't have a whole lot of power, and I realize that, but we do use that little property behind us, and the property line is only 12 feet from the back of the building. So if he builds coming behind the church, he's only 12 feet from our back door.
Mr. Ronan, quick question, are you concerned with what may happen on...
I'm concerned on...
...more behind you, or...
Well, more behind you, more than anything, because if he builds, I don't know, he mentioned Taco Bell, if they have a drive-through, I know some churches got drive-throughs, but this Taco Bell, they got a drive-through, they're going to drive right in behind us, maybe even don't worship out there, who knows? And if we rezoned that particular area, say Taco Bell doesn't come to pass, then they may be able to put any kind of business right behind the church. And then there's another fight, you know? So it's just one thing after another, but I think I got some people here that want to speak, if that's okay with you all.
That's the reason why I had the public hearing first.
Appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hey, everybody, I know everybody. I feel the same way he feels.
I had to say your name and for the...
Yes, that man, Greg, please.
Andre Baker, 111 East Cooper Street. Ready?
Ready.
Yeah.
Okay. My concern is just like Pastor Brown, to bring all the traffic down and all the commercial down to my yard, back of the church. I think it's inconvenient, I think it causes a lot of problems there. And, uh, I really, I just, we need our hand, and we're on the front of the car. I mean, it can stay on the highway, but it don't need to come down halfway, not being hard, not being difficult, but, uh, we're trying to look out for our area also. But it's something that needs to be there. And I'm against it, I'm not against who wants to value anything like that, but I'm against businesses coming down to my backyard. I've already got a lot of traffic coming in there, people running in and out of it all through the night, and that's what we're running into, a whole lot more. And I appreciate y'all considering the residents that live there, just being on the good side and being honest with our people. Okay? I don't want problems, don't want to cause one, but we'll have trouble when all this starts to happen, because there's so much traffic coming through there. You're at 2:00 in the morning, you hear traffic coming, you say, I don't know where they're going, I don't have a clue what they're doing, they come and walk through the yard, they walk to the churchyard, they take stuff off my carport, so I just want to stop anything that's like this is going to happen. I hate to open the door for something like that to happen in my community.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. Anyone else?
You gotta have the better hag say something, right?
My name is Pearl Brown, and I'm a member of West Point Missionary Baptist Church, and I speak against the rezoning also. Um, we're just concerned, you know, with the property right adjacent to our backyard and what's going on with construction phase, going to have all that heavy traffic impacting not only Main Street, but those both side streets, Cooper and, uh, Street and the other street. Um, those trucks aren't going to be favorable to the condition of the street when they come. Uh, there's going to be dust, there's going to be noise, there's going to be air or water pollution going on, uh, possibly pest infestation. Uh, and then in the back, they're going to be having to cut down some trees if they're going to use that backyard. Those trees are going to fall onto our property, so, you know, we're concerned with all that. But if it does pass, we're still going to have problems, because if it does be a fast food, then you got that drive-through that would be disturbing our services on Sunday mornings and Wednesday nights, um, and be disturbing the quietness of the neighborhood. You know, people might be trying to rest to go to work, and then you have the drive-through people, you know, saying, I want three tacos, please, you know, whatever. Um, then there's the parking, the lighting, um, and increased crime with the building right there, and so, and possibly lower property tax. So, uh, those are just some things that we're concerned with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak?
My name is Helen Anderson. I lived at 1255 First Avenue, near Mount Pleasant, on North 166th. And what I'm here about is about that mess next door to me. Uh, they, um, people passes by and they hold it, that's a mess, they're going to come in my backyard.
Ma'am, I don't think you're speaking on what we're speaking of right now. We're talking about rezoning a piece of property on North...
Oh, well, I was talking, I thought if we just speak up about...
No, ma'am, it's about this very specifically. At the end of the meeting, we'll have a moment for people to talk.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Whitman. I live at 506 North Main Street in Mount Pleasant. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that I'd like to honor the plan of reinventing Mount Pleasant. Um, I talked to a number of the residents, and they said, yeah, we need some more eating places, and they recall when Sonic was right next to First Merchant, um, and they're all in, you know, they did like that. I also, um, like to give respect to Mr. Kitchell. I respect entrepreneurship. Um, I think he has the interest of Mount Pleasant at heart with what he wants to do. Um, so when I first saw this, it didn't really bother me, I said, well, that's down the street. But then when I started thinking about it, my concern is traffic. And I know that we went through a lot to make it safe for our children to go up and down Main Street. Um, and I really thank the city for what they did for the children, because I really have that at heart. Um, the only thing that I wonder is if the city has considered doing any research on the traffic, what traffic, how is Main Street going to be, um, affected by the new traffic? My biggest fear is that we're going to become a poor lady. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak?
Hi, I'm Ben Kitchell, 7009 Hoover Mason Lane. I'm the guy looking at buying the property. Whatever we do with the property, the house is pretty rough, it's not livable, so the house needs to tore down either way. I mean, it just does. It could be brought back, but it'd take more to bring it back than it would build anyway. Uh, the property next door that I own, we've had Taco Bell in the past, looked at it, I don't know if I can get them back in here or not. I don't know, I wish I did. When they did look at it, they said if it wasn't big enough, and they either needed the house beside it or the church behind it to be big enough to build. So that's why we're looking at buying this and trying to do this. Uh, I do know a lot of their concerns with the traffic and how it's laid out and all that has to, all that has to come in front of y'all again if we get to that point anyway. So I completely understand. I do think I have the best interest of Mount Pleasant in my heart. I don't know that anything ever come of this property, but I'm going to try my best to do something really good with it positive. Hope it's good for everybody when it's done. Hopefully, in that point too, we'll address all the other issues that they're concerned with and try to make it good for everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
Good evening. My name is Georgina Porter-Wilson, live, reside at 303 Early Road, Columbia. So I am a member of West Point Missionary Baptist Church as well, and I can appreciate Mr. Kitchell coming forth today. My concern as a member, long-term, that was it, he mentioned it, to be able to own the property that we revived as well. I feel like it's a safe, I feel like it's for the betterment, but there's nowhere for us to go. So rather than look at it in that, from that standpoint, we already have issues with it just being the property beside us and the property to the right and to the left. We're in the middle. And like our driveway already is a pass-through, so you can only imagine if it's a commercial business, it's viable, because right now we don't have, we have two that are not viable, and it's already an issue. When our children go out to play, you know, we don't have any boundaries to keep them safe. So if we open it up where it tree-rain, we really are in a predicament where we're going to cause some additional problems. We know, we all recognize, there needs to be some growth in Mount Pleasant, but do we have to have it right there? My concern is, is there not another place? We have, you know, Fred, you know, it's empty right now. I mean, that's a lot of space, but that's neither here nor there, because that's not what we're talking about right now. But it's big, it's open, and it's right down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Let the record show, no one else here to speak, please. Uh, I'm going to give each of the commissioners an opportunity to speak, but I do want to cover something with each of you first, please. And that is a memo that Cory, our attorney, had presented with us, presented us for this evening. It actually was done back in March, where Cory has done a great job in trying to make sure that we follow, uh, what our facts are of the zoning amendments that we have. And, uh, they are as followed in this deliberation. Number one is the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area, and so when you're addressing this, make sure, please, that you address one of these four findings. There will be no adverse effect on adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. No property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public. Number four, conditions affecting the area have changed to sufficient extent to warrant amendment of the area's land use plan and subsequently the zoning map. So please, as you're addressing this as we move forward, please make sure you keep your comments and your, uh, I guess...
...celebrations along these...
Specific to these...
I've heard people say things like Taco Bell, your decision has nothing to do with future use of that. It's the zoning of that parcel. Any future use would have to go back before the planning commission to determine if it, it meets the guidelines and has to be voted on there.
But that's off the unit range of things right now, correct?
Right, right.
This is a rezoning, so what you're considering is whether this property is more appropriately residential or commercial.
Correct.
And if, um, if it's rezoned or if it's not rezoned, any future use would have to go back through the planning commission. If it was commercial use, it would probably have to have a site plan, which would lay out all the different landscaping and lighting and parking and all that too. This is strictly about what the general use of the property is for, residential or commercial.
I say something wrong, you just said it.
Yeah, this is just guidance for your deliberation.
But I think it's important that as we comment, that we keep our findings just to these four.
Relating those back.
That's right. So with that, who'd like to go first?
I mean, I don't mind going first.
Okay, be happy for you to.
It's just like I mentioned Thursday night, you know, I voted for it on the first full round, that's because no one was objecting to it. So then, later on, we found out that they were objecting to it. And I go back to my situation, where somebody wanted a illiterate residential and somebody wanted it to go commercial. So it was just going to be a real small, you know, three or four cars. And it was, but once that person sold it, it became a junkyard. And, but I mean, when I see what these people want, and don't misunderstand me about being a Jane, you can see what they have in town, you know? Everything they have, you know, looks nice. And I'm not worried about that part, but I'm just worried if something, I guess, later on down the road, and that's the only reason being right now, I'd have to say, say no for it. I just want you to know that.
Who would like to speak next?
I'm willing now for the very reason that I always say, is because, uh, I grew up down the street, and the church has been a long time, and the fact that the, um, property does run all the way down behind people's houses and stuff, and people do cut through it, through church parking lots, you get that there, that it's going to be an issue with the church property if you change it to commercial, and once you change it, you don't know what's going to put there. Yes, it has to go to the planador, co-planador, but still, it's commercial, and you don't, you got the church, you got to come back and fight a battle, because they shouldn't have to fight.
Yes.
I, I just, everything I'm hearing sounds like the lack of people being in that area is what's called in the problem almost, that there's all this possible stuff going bad, people doing this bad or this wrong, and there's nothing there. If there were some people there, would that not help alleviate some of that problem? I mean, there would be attention in that area, there would all of a sudden be people that cared what was going on there. As is, it doesn't sound like anyone really cares what's happening over there, which is causing a problem, the way I hear it from Andre, was that all this bad things take place over there because there's people cutting through and taking things off here and there. If there was some activity over there, would that not change? But we don't know any of this, to be fair, because we don't really know what's going to be there, or what, I mean, Taco Bell, I hear people ask for places to eat every day, you know, and where do you grow at Mount Pleasant? Not a whole lot of more area off of downtown, but the areas that are adjacent to downtown areas, they connect, seems like that's the only place downtown has to grow.
And again, we want to keep these little rules in mind.
Sure, keep it, right. Please keep that in mind.
So to kind of put what I feel like I'm hearing into these things, I think Mr. Davis and Ms. Grand Mary are saying that they feel like changing this to commercial would have an adverse effect on adjoining property owners, right? And that's why you're against it. Um, Mr. Commissioner Smith is saying that it would be for the overwhelming public good or welfare to put some activity in this area, because, um, it's neighbored, and it's the only way, not only place, but it's a place to grow up because it already touches commercial and residential.
And I went, I went down and made notes on our forum and like, and trying to put personalities and knowledge and what it could be, and that, and just looking at this, is that, um, I look at number four about the conditions affecting the area, it's efficient, sufficient extent to warrant, that it amends that, and I agree with that, and it, uh, and I have to put, and looking at the changes in, in that, and my confidence in that, this right now is going to be a change just from a residential to a commercial, that house is bad, I look at the property next to it, and that is the old service station that definitely needs something done with it, that's not a really pretty site right there, that it could be developed, and while the church would have, could have an adverse effect on it, if we put our confidence in it, and it comes to us again, and we may not be here, but the people that are here hopefully will look at this, and Cory's got it, let it not be something detrimental. I mean, we've taken this action on other things that could be a change to, that I have to have the confidence that we're looking at something, we're changing it from a residential to like, commercial, that it could be something positive. I'm not necessarily looking and putting down the model of a fast food place, it could be an attractive business that's there, that's not a storefront rather than a, uh, a fast food place. We need a nice restaurant instead of, not the Taco Bell, not a nice restaurant, let me get that out of the way, but an attractive restaurant or an attractive business there that would draw, or store, something, storefront, that would be, or B&amp;B, Airbnb, something that would be more positive. And I would like for those people that are supporting that from the church net to be present at that meeting, if people stay involved in these things, we won't have changes that are detrimental. You know, all of us come forward and say, okay, these people bought this and they rezoned it commercial, now let's put something in here that's attractive and keep our neighborhood nice. We put the courthouse down in an area that said, we're not going to put something there, it's going to be destroyed, it's not going to be kept up. We've got a beautiful building down there in an area where they said, don't put anything nice down there, we shouldn't put anything nice down there. And it is, and it's a nice building. So I'm going to support the change to, to, to a commercial, but I'm going to stand behind that when it comes and be present, those, the zone planning and zoning conditions, that makes sure that something goes there that's not going to create a more of a problem for the people that are around that, to make sure that we stay within that, that presence of protecting it. And I look at number three and say that not only is the property owner not going to benefit material, materially, that will be to the detriment of the people that are there. That's the one that was hard for me, because I don't want it to be a detriment to the church that's there, but I want to see Mount Pleasant to prosper, and I agree that it should be changed to commercial. But, you know, personally, I don't want to see a Taco Bell go across the street from a New Mexican restaurant for that. But I'm, you know, that's my personal opinion, and I don't know if that's Taco Bell, but that can affect my opinion at all, that's not affecting my opinion at all. I'm looking at, I want people to be there, present at those planning commissions. I've got a, I've got a building at the end of my road that's, that I sat in those planning commissions, and I asked that gentleman, you going to have trucks on my road? But I don't want trucks on my road, you know, so that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Kitchell? Yes, sir. This would have been a lot easier for me if I hadn't just run by that property. The weeds behind the old Phillips 66 are above my head. And frankly, I'm surprised that this church hadn't come forward to our community about that right now. And that concerns me, that we are sitting here considering... And that concerns me, that we are sitting here considering rezoning something that right now is not being very well kept. It's a joint that you currently own. But I also have to step back and look at what's before me and the findings of the facts concerning that piece of property. And I don't see us, much like the others, number three, I don't see that we're going to be affecting small groups of people. I think that if you come into our community and First Main, First Avenue is going to become, whether we want to admit this or not, First Avenue is going to become a thoroughfare into our community. Because of the new bridge that's built, the new highway that's gonna be completed all the way down to Lewis County, and it's gonna change the direction of people coming into our community, and I firmly believe that. The traffic counts, already, somebody brought up the traffic counts, and the traffic counts already show that that's what's going to happen. I don't think Main Street, if you turn right or left, is going to be affected as much as just that what you will have happen is, they'll come down and they'll have to go one way or the other. The conditions affecting the area have changed in that we have a downtown revitalization that's ongoing, and that piece of property has been identified out that far as being a piece of property that would be part of the downtown revitalization. So it would be an amendment to the area's land use plan and a zoning map, but it is again in what we have in future plans. But again, I am going to ask you in the kindest way to please be a good neighbor to your neighbors, because frankly, right now, I'm surprised that they hadn't been here to see Mr. Archibald about the grace. It disappoints him. Not gonna take any stones. So with that said, we'll have a roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry? Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Langenship?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Vote here, five, three to two.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, I know that this didn't go exactly the way you wanted, but you also are gonna have the opportunity to come back before the planning commission, because any changes in this property other than the zoning will require it to go before the planning. And I can assure you with the new use, with the planning commission, the way they set up today, the drawings will be very specific to what happens, very specific. And I would encourage you, and it would pour upon you, because I have a deep feeling for that church because of what I have witnessed today. And I would encourage you to be back here for it. And thank each of you for your time for coming to this meeting and making yourself a vote, because you took time out of your own day to do that. Thank you. Okay. Number seven, monthly report from the mayor, and I'm gonna be real brief, Kate, I said there would not be anything here, but I'm gonna talk about two or three good things right quick. Number one is the summer concert series was done Saturday night at Sands Home, and it was an overwhelming success. At one time, I guarantee you, there were 125 people there at least. See lots of people shaking their head. It was a fantastic show, and thank you for each of you being there and supporting the community, because that's what it was. Second is, and somebody mentioned it, I think Lawrence did, the new courthouse, I encourage you to get by and see it. It is a fantastic addition to our community. It has made our community a much safer place to live. In nothing but, they now have metal detectors. And if nothing but, now you have a separate place for the people coming in to be heard in front of the court versus having to sit next to the person that was there having the problem. So I want to thank the county commission, Kate, a lot of other folks for all the good work you did on that, because that's great for our community. I noticed already, I'm not here every day, but the downtown parking's available again, so I know the downtown emergency police with that. And then the last thing I'm gonna have is, if you wanna come see somebody do their best not to make a fool of themselves, I would encourage you to be at the Mount Pleasant Grill Thursday morning at eight o'clock. It's breakfast with the mayor, put home by the chamber, Perry County Chamber of Commerce, of which I'll be sitting on a stool, I guess having shots fired at. So it's going to be as positive as it can be, but I would encourage you to come by. It'll be upstairs at the grill. Breakfast will be served. And gotta go upstairs to listen, I'm sorry. But that's all I've got. I just wanted to make sure we pulled out the good things that are going on. Number eight, monthly financial budget report. Ms. Lawrence?
Well, as you know, we've been in the midst of our conversion in our utility building. It's not been without hiccup and challenges, but it is moving along, and we have narrowed fish line on the new system. And for the future, hoping that we'll have more possibilities of ways to make it easier for our city, for the residents, to get better service. And obviously, we're in dire need of a new updated system. David Jo said to me this morning that she was excited about some of the things that she thinks she's gonna be able to use the system for, and she had been using the old system for 20 years. So that tells you how inadequate the system was, and how many obstacles it put for us in being able to move forward and to offer a better service. So we're excited about it and are working through the hiccup. That's also why you're just now getting your profit loss statement, the...
She's not having fun.
She should have in front of you. The one thing that I did notice when I got ready to run the financial, there was no revenue in our watering day. What had happened was that in the process of the building, there was one more step that had to be done.
With the new software.
With the new software that they had not shown us. So we had to go back and pick up that last step and recognize the billing for the month. So that was just one of those hiccups that have occurred. We've had issues with metering and getting those transferred over, but I think they've pretty much worked through it. And it's also served to show us where our weaknesses are and help us identify areas that we need to do more work on. We realized that the meters, the numbers had not been entered in the system. So they were not consistent between what we had up here and what the gentleman would have out in the field. So that's one of those things that we're working on now to correct and update, and again, make it easier and better to serve our residents. August, for the August month for the financial, the revenue is close to being what was projected. Obviously, it's one of the leaner months because we don't start to collect property taxes until really them down in November. And the expenditures are right on target. Actually, they're a little bit less. They're 13.9% of the budgeted amount. A normal would be 17%, so we're right on target as far as that goes. Cash balances remain fairly steady. Don't see any problem there. The only one issue we have with the, the one big expenditure we had for the month was the, we got the revenue and the purchase of the fire truck, and that was done this month. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. When you said with the coordination between the meter numbers and what we had, is that none of the discrepancy with billings right now, that we threw of where meters weren't read correctly and that, or is that just...
Now, that was more of the issue of how the meters being pulled into, how the meters are reading and pulling into the system. The meter numbers helps identify what meter is where. So where that helps is when they're trying to go out and change a meter. They wanna make sure that this meter is at this house, and that's identified with those meter numbers. The old system used a different number to pull in those numbers, so they had to come get all of those in sync.
And Ms. Langenship, in some areas, the meters simply needed to be replaced. And when in doubt, we charge the minimum, because we don't know what the reach should have been.
Okay. So that, correct, if someone were to call, I'm directing them to call up here, to either the office here...
The meter is reading, we've gone audit the account, the meter's not reading, we're just gonna charge you the minimum, and we're gonna get the meter fixed.
Okay. Just make sure we're going to and not giving them an explanation. I don't know anything at all.
And we'll look at those on case-by-case basis, because sometimes we find where the meters weren't functioning.
Weren't functioning.
And we sent people out, and until that time, that they are able to replace that meter, we just charge the minimum. We just go up there.
We're paying attention to it, that's the important thing.
You're exactly right.
Thank you. Exactly.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept the financial budget report?
I make a motion to accept it, as presented.
Do we have a motion? We have a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Monthly report from the city manager.
I just have a couple things, I won't repeat what the mayor said, but ditto on some of the positive things that have happened this week. Wanted to just point out that unemployment has been 3% or less, and anybody that works for the city could be someplace else. And we have very little turnover, and I'm really proud of that. That's not just the leadership team, that's everybody. And I think we're doing something right, you're doing something right to keep the employees here. I wanted to mention the mayor's breakfast, if anybody would like to be at the breakfast, and I haven't registered yet, if they'll see me, I'll get them registered for Friday. But I also want to...
Thursday?
Thursday. I don't know why I think that thing's on Friday. I've said that from the very beginning, but it is Thursday, eight o'clock. But I also want to point out that I have not had administrative assistance for nine weeks. And I have not noticed it because Victoria Poindexter has done a fabulous job, and she has stepped in and has taken on everything, every role possible. And so it has been a smooth transition. Teresa's doing well, and she will be back, but Victoria has done an awesome job. Just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yes. Thank you, Victoria.
And that's it.
I see probably more so than the other four, because I'm not running through, but thank you. Anything else?
No.
Thank you, sir.
I guess I almost had something. Kate, I went back on G line, I was looking at the case as a person, and I missed out on the period of... $2,600 for the Mountain Country Club.
$2,500, I think, but yeah, that's the annual membership.
Annual membership.
It was in the budget last year, and it's in the budget again this year.
It was in the budget.
Yeah. And last year, it was specified as a line item for all of you to consider because there were some that were not supportive of it. So we made sure when you looked at it in the budget last year that you knew that's what you were voting on, that it's in the budget again.
Kate, might explain what that is.
And that's why any city employee, the ability, it's almost like a benefit to their employment, it gives any city employee the benefit of playing golf for free, if they want a cart, have to pay for the cart. And so we've got 73 employees, and all of them can go and play golf at the local golf course and not have to pay to pay that. But I think it's $2,500, if I'm mistaken, I'll let you know when I thought you saw it. That's what you saw in there, okay. But it's due every September, and that's what you saw.
You're right. Anyone else? All right. Special reports from city departments and committees, if applicable.
There's no West corner or Mount Pleasant, yes, some reports, thank you.
Okay. Number 11, new business. A ordinance 2019-1040 in ordinance to convert Brownlow Lane to a one-way street, and the city of Mount Pleasant to describe more accurately within the body of this ordinance.
Mayor and commissioners, this is something that we've actually had MTS look at as well, that we believe Brownlow needs to be one way to, for better use, but this is an example of how the system works. We had a resident come in this cannon, that talked about how she didn't like, she didn't think the direction of going east from Main worked well. She thought it would be better suited to go west. And we have considered that, and we're actually changing our recommendation. So what you have in front of you is changing Brownlow at the T to be one way going towards Main Street, west. And that's what you're voting on, first reading, and obviously, there'll be a second reading and a public hearing.
I'll speak too, briefly, as I try to do with everything we're doing in here. I try to go by and look, all right, what makes sense. And low and behold, the day I decided to go, I had to follow a school bus up there, and I still don't know how that driver got up through there, frankly. And then I got stopped by the school bus. And the school bus had to stop because there was a young lady that needed a wheelchair, and she was using a wheelchair in the unload system on that school bus is on the, behind it from the right side. Well, that young lady lived on the right side of the road. That was enough for me. When we've got a young lady that's going to school, doing everything like it should, and we need to support that. Now, the other side to it was, I said, all right, I try to make sure I do things that make sense. We do it the other way, the school bus is gonna violate the law five days a week for every day they in service. So we gonna start writing tickets to school buses every day? I just don't think that's a good idea. So that's the reason why I'm in favor of coming from west to east.
Or off the east to west.
Or whatever it is.
This went before the planning commission, and they recommended the way that MTS did the other way, easterly.
Right.
And I was worried that that might be a problem, but I went back and looked at our zoning ordinance, and it says that the commission is not bound by the precise language of the planning commission. So you can take their recommendation and that it be a one-way street and then change the direction, and it doesn't have to go back.
Yeah, they certainly recommended it be a one-way street.
So again, this will go through...
Second reading next month.
Second reading and a public hearing. So everybody understands why I stand on that and the reason I stand on that. B, ordinance 2019...
Yeah. We had a motion to move.
I make a motion that we approve that as with the change going directional, I don't know what the direction is now.
East to west.
East to west. All right. We have a motion to change that from east to west. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. B, ordinance 2019-1042, ordinance meaning Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, Zoning of the Ordinance, the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code being the same zoning ordinance to the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning a property from residential low-density R1 to light industrial. And I'm gonna let Kate or Cory want to speak on this, but this is being done in mid-strike.
Yes. This is something, mayor and commissioners, that we really truly believe that was not caught with the new zoning ordinance that was passed October of last year. This is a strip, if you're looking at Arlington Cemetery, is immediately to the left of that, that has been commercial for quite some time, and somehow got into the zoning ordinance and was changed to residential. So the recommendation from the planning commission is to get this back to light industrial.
Again, this is the first reading.
And there'll be a public hearing next month.
Correct. Next month.
And it'll have all these same rules in front of you.
Exactly.
To rezon.
Correct. Any questions, comments?
No, sir.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance 2019-243, which reads on light, industrial, residential, convert residential to commercial.
To light. Light industrial.
Light industrial.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. C, ordinance 2019-1043, an ordinance lowering the driving speed limit on Brookside Drive.
Mayor, commissioners, as you know, the residents of Brookside Drive came in with a petition. There was a serious accident there in the last couple weeks of a child getting hit by a car, and they recommend, or they are asking for the commission to consider lowering the speed limit from 25 to 15. And this is an ordinance, so this will have to go in front of you again for a public hearing, second reading in October.
Correct.
And you all have the petition. You all saw that at the city session.
You all saw that at the city session.
Yes.
I think Kate Thomas, right here, who's the one that did the petition. Does anyone want to speak on it?
Yeah. Pity, yes, absolutely. Is it okay?
Is that all right?
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, but if you want to hear a comment, you can go ahead.
Okay. Right ahead. State your name and address, please. We know who you are, but we're going to do it the same for everybody.
My name's Karen Kenny, and I live at 410 Brookside Drive. And my residence is in the first curve in the residential area. So I feel like we are directly affected by the speed limit. I have witnessed so many several cars turning that curve at such a high speed in the opposite side of the road. Cultural changes. We have a lot of children in that neighborhood. Twenty-five is excessive. Most residents that drive in through that neighborhood do not even stay at twenty-five. But it prompts, the accident from the child getting hit prompted the petition. However, we have complained vocally, just not off the record.
We've talked about it for a while.
We have complained for about a couple of years now. But we have, there are so many children. There are no sidewalks, no curbs. Children are going to go visit their neighbors. The thing that they have is on the road. I speak not only for the children in our neighborhood. We have several senior citizens that walk daily along the road. There have been times when I have been out walking, I have to get in the grass to avoid being getting hit. And I have witnessed several teenagers, they get together, they socialize, they walk down the road, talking and walking. It's very dear to me. It's very, I have three children. I'm terrified every day that my little nine-year-old wants to go out and play. I'm terrified.
But to say it forward about this, I may be totally wrong. What is the percentage of the people, I guess, driving on that street that live there? It's probably ninety-nine percent?
Definitely.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. And I mean, you would think the people in that neighborhood wouldn't respect their neighborhood.
When I went to go get the petition, when I went to house to house, I went house to house asking for support. I did not get one person that did not want to support it. Every one of them said, definitely, we will sign our names. These people need to slow down.
But you can't send the police over there the day and just sit there and.
Unless you live there, it's unbelievable how many, how much traffic is through there that do not.
I can imagine the people that live in that neighborhood that would slow down.
If the speed limit changes, I'm sure there's going to be an education process that needs to go along with it and to talk about, to the neighbors about slowing down.
Or even if they don't pay attention now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that change aside, that they're a fixed problem. Actually, I think there needs to be some education somewhere, you know.
Well, in the petition, I did ask for extra signage as well. There's only one speed limit going in, or speed signs, speed limit signs going in and one coming out that I was not even aware of. It's in an odd location. So as the houses are coming, building into the neighborhood, that neighborhood probably has close to doubled since we have moved in there, and there's not been any additional signage. So that's, I feel like, could help with this.
But Chief, I don't know if it's brought up something, you know, I mean, I don't know how much came in, my husband and I live in Michael, whatever, but, you know, they're not allowed to go over ten miles an hour speeding. If it's running down to fifteen, you know, I don't know.
However, if a child gets hit.
Well, I mean, if a child gets hit.
Could possibly be too late.
Well, if that's ten miles, I'm slowing down to get there. I mean.
I just ask you all to consider.
People in the night, you know.
Consider that not only for the children, for the senior citizens that live in that neighborhood, also for the teenagers that live in that neighborhood. If there were sidewalks, I probably wouldn't have this issue. However, there is no means for them to walk or go from house to house unless they are on the side of the street, and that street is not very wide for all of the amount of traffic that we're receiving. And I understand that it'd be very difficult to widen the street. However, I don't feel like it would be all that difficult to lower the speed limit to be able to keep the safety of our residents.
But again, it just makes it way for people to slow down.
I agree. I can get ready to say that.
I just don't think that fifteen miles an hour is going to affect it.
And I understand that there are other neighborhoods.
I agree with that.
I'd be in full support of that.
Bringing it down to fifteen, it's not going to make a difference. And speed bumps, you know, once they go up there, sometimes they'll slow down. But I mean, changing it to fifteen, I just don't see.
And that may be my next step. I don't know.
Yeah, I won't be changing it to fifteen.
I'm trying to start somewhere, and I've heard that there have been other areas within the city that would like to see speed limits lowered. You know, maybe this is a beginning. I don't know. All I know is right now, I fear for my own child, children's lives, along with my neighbors.
Well, I don't want to say, well, my kids play in the street, and just like I have to yell at my neighbor's kids a while ago, you know, do not come in my yard. I can just, oh, remove this angle. But I mean, you know, the person that came up here to hit that pole, that pole was not driving twenty-five miles an hour. And they fly through there all the time. And what I'm saying is, I feel like speed bumps would be more effective than trying to lower the speed limit.
Yeah, I think it's fixed the policy.
They're more than, I'm going to put a petition a while, I would too.
Is that something Kate's looking to, like, you know, actually, or to see why the call?
Yeah, I would have to look into that because I think, and I don't think I'm mistaken, I think that speed bumps have to be engineered. You don't just.
Can I speak on that? Can I speak on that? I've had a, my neighbor actually, just, we spoke last night or night before, he has inquired on that, and he has found a place that has, that you can actually purchase speed bumps, found at a six-foot, I guess, one of those littler speed bumps with the caps on the end. I don't know.
Right.
But six-foot, one wide is about a hundred dollars.
But installing it, and then if it affects drainage.
He was willing to install it himself. I don't know.
I addressed this last week when you were here. I grew up in urban city area and in suburbs, suburbs, where we went from thirty houses to three hundred and something houses in less than eighteen months. And talk about kids, the new elementary schools and the temporary buildings of, when it opened that year. So we had kids galore. We had some sidewalks and some not. You can have, and our speed limit was twenty-five, and it remained that way. And then when I grew, that's with my kids, but when I grew up, with no sidewalks and the same area. It doesn't matter with the speed limit. It was all people that lived in there, and Michael could get out there and give ticket after ticket after ticket. It's going to be the parents' responsibility in educating to do that, and it is tragic. And you're going to have tragic things happen.
I do understand that, but we also have to keep in mind, they are children, and they're trying to make the safe. They're going to take after a ball.
Let me finish, please. There are things you have to do to educate them. And it's just like we put this cross in here and that. But I'm telling you, we had a petition to lower the speed limit, because that didn't work. The speed limit is not the thing. It's educating the people to do that. I live on Hoover Mason Road. The speed limit there is twenty-five miles an hour. We walk, there's kids galore since that subdivision has moved in. I'm probably, one of the few that doesn't have kids there. The kids go back and forth, and they play in the street, and they've got five acres, and they're in the street to play on. It's educating them, those trucks go up and down and that. That's not what, the speed limit is not doing, it's twenty-five miles an hour. And we could lower it to fifteen, and it's not going to help. We're going to have to come up with something that we can do to educate it. The only people that live on your street are the people that are there. And you signed it, one of my workers signed that petition. She didn't even know what she signed. She was there, she signed it, her parents signed it.
I don't know. I spoke to every single person, and I explained what the petition was about.
But I asked her, because she takes out of the parking lot. She's a teen, a nineteen-year-old, she takes out of my parking lot like hell on wheels.
I know what you're talking about, my neighbor, next door neighbor, and she knows what she was signing about.
And drives like that. And I asked her, I said, you drive like that in your subdivision? You know, so I'm not saying, and when we do that, we're going to have to change back over by the courthouse, and that they're driving like crazy and that down that street. You go down the street to Gardenia Park. We, and I understand, but let's think of some way that's going to do it other than changing the speed limit.
So let's take small steps instead of trying to take a giant leap.
I just wanted to explain to you why I'm going to vote against that, okay?
So be it. I care about my children and my neighbor's children. They're little. We have toddlers in there and babies and grandparents and grandbabies. Thank you.
I'm getting ready to ask you a couple of questions.
Mayor, I spoke to John Carlson yesterday. He's MTS specialist, the street stuff. He's done all the one-way streets for us. We're setting a date. He's going to come down, and him and I are going to ride around and look at the no parking situations and the speed limits on all the streets. I'll have a date for you on that.
All right. With that being said.
And they are not moving quickly.
They're not bad on that.
No, I realize that.
He's already doing a street study for me on Main Street. We're already looking at changing some speed zones, removing some speed zones and lowering some limits. He's been working on that a couple of months.
All right.
Is he also the one that recommends, could recommend speed bumps?
He is, because he know all that.
That's exactly what I was getting ready to ask. All right. All right. Can we legally put speed bumps in that subdivision?
I'm not the right person to add that.
Okay, cool.
I don't even know, that's not the answer to that question. But something that costs a hundred dollars is not going to, it was them.
John would know. John would know.
I get you. I get you. All right. Everybody's had their chance to speak. Cory.
You can defer it, or you can just.
Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to defer it.
And let's get Michael, get the opportunity to get the right people in here, because I'm going to tell you, I'd have to vote for it right now. There's well over seventy-five percent of that neighborhood that signed that petition. Okay? So that's where I am. But I would like for us to defer this, and we've got a motion in a second, to get what MTS says we should do. Small steps, okay?
I just want to make sure you understand that it's totally out of our control, and it could be spring of next year.
I completely understand, but I know Michael will do all he can do to try to push that through.
I'm going to call it first thing in the morning.
Thank you. That's all, that's all all of us can ask. All right. We have a motion to defer in a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Wait, before you do that, can we ask, you're deferring it until?
The study can be done through MTS with our police department.
I vote yes to deferring it until we can go study it, MTS. So something we can do, we have the right information.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 That was a roll call. Everybody.
I tried.
Something else, lady, I'd just like to, can we put, you know, I don't know what signs it calls, you know, just put up a children's toy.
I think they're already up.
And some individuals have their own.
Yeah.
Now, one thing that you did say, because I grew up in there, we do need more speed limit signs out there. Unless you come in here from a, if you come in from a, that way, you don't miss the speed limit sign. I mean, it would speed limit it anyway, because they also resident on the speed limit twenty-five, so, you know, they know that, but.
I've seen two signs in this town that were on personal property, and they are the best two signs, and they are identical, and they are red and white.
Drive like your children.
Drive like your children.
That's right. I look at it every morning and think.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll drive very careful right here.
Okay. D, resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-one, a resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee declaring surplus of the city of Mount Pleasant inventory a surplus and authorizing the sale of this surplus property. One truck, correct?
Correct. One truck that is in building codes right now, but will be surplus and called on Go Field.
All right. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We stole that truck.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. E, resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-two, a resolution adopting the revised social media use and internet hosting policy.
Mayor, commissioners, I'll let Cory chime in on this, but you passed a resolution last month, and we have emails, and I know I've shared it with the mayor, with MTS apologizing with their recommendation that was not doable. And so we're back here, they, MTS has said the best thing was to be non-interactive and something, a site like a Facebook does not allow you to be non-interactive, but it is interactive. So we're back at this, the same spot in front of you, wanting to update and have a new social media policy. And this one, this one goes into several areas where we are not in the business of censoring, and we're not in the business of removing things that have been posted. But if you posted something that is not relevant at all to what was posted, we do have the ability to address that. And it goes into lots of rules, what employees can and can't do when it comes to social media. Cory, would you want to chime in there?
Just the biggest addition is that, or the biggest change from the one you passed last month is that now it lists reasons that the city could remove comments.
Because it is going to be, it has to be interactive.
Yes, because it does have to be interactive. But just like you do in a public meeting, you have the right to control what topics are, that you speak about, and you can prevent things that are, I mean, you've seen the list.
In section two point nine, yeah.
Yes. The two point nine list will be things that will be removed. The only change that would be different than what was in your packet on Friday would be we removed a sentence from, I think, section two point eight.
Two point one two.
Well, two point one two is different now because we did have, Loretta had to keep track of all the social media pages and all their passwords. But Mr. Haywood told us that they change pretty regularly, and so that would be just a constant for Loretta to keep up with those. So we changed it and said that the city will allow dual.
Ensure, yeah.
Ensure dual accessibility. So if somebody quits, that there's another way to get into the Facebook as well, or social media, not just Facebook, but that's just the only one the city has now. And it removed that it's not designed to be interactive. The page is still not designed to be interactive, but it will be somewhat as in the city can make its posts and citizens can make comments. But the city's not going to respond back on Facebook. So, um, so that's it. I think you all had a chance to look at, so be happy to answer questions.
And is there any way that they need to word this as far as get rid of, getting rid of what they passed?
This, you can just adopt this resolution as presented, because the resolution itself, that the City of Mount Pleasant passed a social media use policy in August of two thousand nineteen, being resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six. And now we should repeal and replace things. So this resolution will repeal the other one. We passed it as presented.
Just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the new resolution, twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, as presented.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Code, motion carries. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to authorize the city to enter into a professional service agreement with Lowe's Designs for planning services, engineering services, and stormwater review services. And this, for those of y'all that attend the pending commission meetings, this is Will and his group just giving it up here.
Yeah, they, we already have a contract with them. They added a few new services for stormwater review and things like that, and otherwise there really wasn't any changes to the fees, and the contract just wanted to be renewed.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-three.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Code, motion carries. G, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-four, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to authorize the city to enter into a governmental grant contract related to the splash pad.
Mayor, Commissioner, just to clarify about this today, this is just an acceptance in the process, that we have kept, we've done everything that we need to do to date. Now we have a contract that basically outlines what we say that we're gonna do based on the requirements, and we do have to have an approval of the governmental body for that.
And it's about that thick?
Yeah.
It is.
It's a state document.
Thomas was nice, he provided me a copy of it, so I'm saying it is what it is.
It is.
You don't sign it, you don't get the grant.
That's right. It's pretty easy. So do we entertain a motion for this, please?
I'd like a motion for resolution twenty nineteen thirty-four, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant to authorize the city to enter into a governmental grant contract related to the splash pad.
All right. We have a motion.
All that takes, sure.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Code, motion carries. H, approval of state form CTO two fifty-three for leases on a knuckle boom that's already paid for, a fire truck and a garbage truck, but this is just where we're gonna declare the state.
And this is the hook and ladder, this is the fire truck that's gonna exist. I think when we sent in the paperwork for the brand-new fire truck, they realized we didn't have these forms. This will be three different forms, just need to be in the minutes that we're gonna sign off on that.
All right. That takes care of the regular business of our commission meeting, and now we go into the general comments from citizens. I would like to remind everybody that this is for, ordinarily as always, for city residents And we would like for you to manage this in two minutes, but I know that Mr. Combs is here, and I've told him that I would allow him to speak pretty briefly. First we have is Helen Anderson at twelve fifty-five First Avenue.
My name is Helen Anderson.
Police ma'am. And again, if you don't mind, although I read it, please state your name and your address.
My name is Helen Anderson. I live at twelve fifty-five First Avenue, North one sixty-six.
Yes, ma'am.
And what I hear about Mr. Archibald, I just take it it's him, I never met him. Who is Mr. Archibald?
That's him.
Well, supposed to be taking care of a matter for that mess, the big mess next door to me there. But here's what I'd like to request about it, because she ain't got it up yet, and it's just thirty-three days today. Well, there can't be a big tar put over that, and in the back too, because it's just like looking at a mountain. And you look, if you're looking from the, from the street, you can't see what you see at my back door. At my back door, I can hardly breathe out there. And then I was looking to talk about the speed, speeding there at North one sixty-six. The speed limit is thirty-five, and there's been people going by there eighty-five miles an hour. But it knocked my handrails down in front of my house. They knocked my metal, my data hall box down, and it has a, it had a metal post, and they knocked that down. And they've been going at me, a speed, I can't understand that right by the house right there. And if it hadn't been them two trees, if somebody runs off the road, they could hit right into my house right there, because I'm really close to going. I don't know how much that I'm allowed right there, you know, where the highway is, but that's what I've gotta complain about.
Ma'am, the property that you're complaining about is trash. Is that, was that something that was auctioned off recently?
Yes, it was.
So, but we are in the process of property maintenance, and as you know, gotta give thirty days.
Right.
Thirty days is up, but the next step is, it has to go to court. It's not a quick process. And it is a mess. I have to agree with you. Robert, do you have anything on that?
I do. It's actually under building permits, demolition permit.
So they have a demolition permit?
They have a demolition permit in the process. It wasn't initiated by property maintenance, I apologize. It wasn't initiated by property maintenance. The lady that owns the property that recently acquired the property came in for the demolition permit, which they have certain guidelines, they have a certain time period. All building permits by law can go on for a hundred and eighty days as long as they're, it is persistent, or usually demolitions don't take that long. There was two mobile units there, old single-wide mobile units, and they have been removed. Most of the bridges are removed. There are two frames still left on the property at this time. And those frames are what takes typically a little bit longer to remove, because they're bulky, unless you cut them up, you're not taking them off unless it's in one solid piece. So they do have a building demolition permit on that property.
But it is a mess. I have to agree with you on that.
The time limit that you're giving is about a hundred and fifty.
It is. They law says all building permits when they're pulled can last a hundred and eighty days.
Well, there's insulation and stuff all over there, and what I thought you could do is maybe put some tars over there, where it's not gonna blow over on my house. It was two days I couldn't use my air conditioner because of all that stuff. Oh, they didn't come right in my kitchen, in my house right there, and I've been having to breathe that stuff.
I have spoken, just so the board knows, I have spoken with Ms. Anderson here, and I have been in contact with the owner of the property. I've made her aware, and I will make her aware again tomorrow that we need to go ahead and do something to alleviate the situation as it exists until we can complete the project and I can expect it for you.
Because Ms. Anderson, we are not allowed to go on private property, but we can insist that the private property take care of the problem. We'll work towards that. Why did you came and part this?
There was a man that came up there, because the only time I spoke, whether it was because the grass needed cutting there, that said, and I went out there, and I told her about my mother, and that city would come out and do it, and they didn't have to so many, you know, and the city would send my mother a check. Well, she said, I know when she mowed her yard, if they didn't do mine, but he came over there, he said, "I cannot mow that, because it's too much debris here." But today, before, he came over there and mowed that, where's the debris in it? That stuff went everywhere, that insulation, all in there. And he said she told him that she had done got that up, and then there was four or five guys over there, was weed eating and everything. That stuff was going every which way. But I said, if she could put something over that now, so that stuff won't come over to my house, I've got one big tar if I don't put over there behind my air conditioner, over the fence.
I'll have to talk to her tomorrow.
I'll try to make contact with her, and I will again tomorrow as well. I'll go out to the side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next we have Greg Combs. Again, please limit your conversation if you don't mind, please.
Want to keep that?
Limit your conversation, please.
You just lost three seconds.
Oh, goodness. My name's Greg Combs. I live at seventeen seventy-one Long Brax Lane in Mount Pleasant, and we've had that farm probably longer than most of you have been alive. I just recently found out that the local radio station, the owner had a deteriorating health issues and has for quite some time. I've applied to the FCC for the license that is in process now to, for approval. I have an FCC license now, but it's not, it has to be elevated to actually run a radio station locally. The reason I'm doing this, I just wanted to introduce myself to you and let you know what was going on, that I'm in the process of doing this. I'm not asking you for anything. I just wanted you to be aware that this was happening. I think this is a tremendous asset for this community, and the reason why is because it doesn't just broadcast to Mount Pleasant, Columbia, and Spring, and Summertown. It actually broadcasts to anyone in the world. And our military personnel in Afghanistan, I know this because I retired from State Command Center three years ago, and anytime, any of the military personnel on my band that we rode to work with, deployed, they listen to the station so they can keep up with local, local information. So not that anybody from Afghanistan is gonna come here and buy gas or spend money. There are, I know personally about eighteen middle Tennessee, nineteen middle Tennessee counties now that people are waiting for this station to come back online. And when you have events in Mount Pleasant, they're not gonna come if they don't know about it. If you want to increase your sales tax revenues to be able to do some of these projects you're interested in doing, this is how you do it. You get the word out to people, and they'll come. There's, you know, again, Mr. Don Paul is a wonderful man, but he did, through no fault of his own, he was not able to take this station to the next level based on his health situation right now. So my goal is to bring this to a level that the community can be proud of, that it will serve the community. That's what leadership is, you serve the ones that you lead. And there's, there's many, many things I could talk to you about, but I don't wanna exceed my time, so I yield my time back to the commissioners.
All right. Well, yeah, Mr. Combs came by at our work session, and I thought it'd be more appropriate here, he does have attention to buying the radio station, so I thought it was important.
He probably noticed it in the newspaper as part of the process.
Yeah.
That's requirement by the FCC.
I told you, the biggest thing I think everybody's missing around here is football games.
Football games already.
My phone is ringing off the hood, literally. I mean, I thought a few people listened to this station. I was wrong. There are thousands of people that listen to this station.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Joseph Brown. Mr. Brown, you've already spoke, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we've had everything said and done, and I would entertain a motion if we...
Well, it's what we do. One quick thing, and I think therefore he's supposed to be this man several times. I can't think of a man that's left. Lives over on Lawrence Street, lady. And I guess before the baseball season comes around, you know...
No way.[1671.12]